2020 via WebEx. We'll start first by asking the clerk, Madam Clerk, if you would please follow the roll.
Thanks, President. Brightwell?
Yeah.
Haskins?
Here.
Manderbaum?
Present.
Morris?
Present.
Taylor?
Here.
Cruz? Mr. President, you do have a quorum and we do have the mayor, city attorney, city administrator, and deputy city administrator and other post of department heads on the call. And just a reminder, if you're not talking, can you please mute your line?
Thank you, and good evening again, everyone. I hope that everyone had a restful and peaceful weekend and Labor Day. And so we've got to get back to business here. So we've got a lot of agenda items to work through. So let's get started so we can hopefully get through them in a timely manner.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
A little bit out of order, but I want to congratulate you on becoming a groom. So although that was a little out of order, but I couldn't resist.
I thought I was already grown, but maybe I wasn't. Thank you.
Becoming a groom, I thought I said groom, I'm sorry.
Oh, I thought you said grown. Yes, well, thank you. Thanks all of you all for reaching out to me that have about getting myself getting married on last Friday. So I definitely had a great weekend and a couple of days off. And so, you know, COVID can't stop everything. So moving forward, item one is the municipal facilities needs assessment.
Thank you, Council President. OHM Advisors completed this study. This is the executive summary. It has been presented to the Council Finance Committee, and I should have representatives from OHM on hand and ready to present.
Okay, if you're all ready.
Good evening, Council. This is Brett Ronaveldt from OHM Advisors. Joining me also is Murat Ulisir from OHM and Wesley Sims from SDG. I don't know if he was able to join as a participant, so he may be in the in the audience attendee portion of the meeting, but his firm worked on it as well.
He's added as a panelist. I'm sorry, sir. He's been added as a panelist.
Oh, perfect. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you very much. So we're going to share a PowerPoint up that hopefully everyone can see. And Murat Ulisir will probably initiate most of it. I was just going to give a quick introduction. This study's been going on since last summer, and it included a lot of data gathering, as you'll see in the presentation, all the steps that we went through. But a lot of information was compiled. We tried to boil it down into an executive summary report. And then really, the PowerPoint presentation this evening is mostly trying to focus on some high-level strategic decisions that I think are going to be really important to the city as we move forward and think about what's critical for facility investment. Because there's, I don't think it was any surprise, the study found, you know, a lot of deferred needs and a significant future cost to addressing some of those. So I do believe the executive summary was circulated to Council. We'll go through relatively quickly or briefly the PowerPoint summary and then answer any questions or make any comments from staff. We did work quite closely with administration, with John McCrina, and with Austin and the City Finance Department as well. So Murat, do you want to put the presentation up there?
Yep. Good evening, Council. Let me see here. In order for me to be able to share content, for some reason, it doesn't let me share content. I click, I'm clicking on sharing content, but it doesn't let me activate it. Can whoever is sharing the agenda, can they perhaps unshare so that I can pull a presentation up on the screen?
Give us a second. We would change it. Normally, we get the presentation ahead of time, so it's in our PowerPoint, and that did not happen. So give us a second. I didn't, we didn't know you had a PowerPoint.
I see.
We're going to change your role to present right now. Share your content temporarily, okay?
Okay.
There you go, sir.
Thank you. Already. I hope everyone can see my content. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to go into a presentation mode. Presentation mode, it is. I hope you can all still see my screen.
I can see it. I think you're fine.
Okay, very good. Thank you for the information. My name is Murat, and I worked with the Southfield team as a project manager in pulling this presentation together. As Brett mentioned, what we have on the agenda is we would like to briefly present the purpose of the study, go over into methodology and scope, summarize big prospective key findings, and conclude with some strategic considerations, as Brett had mentioned already, in hopes of contextualizing our key findings and also to providing you some considerations for carving a path forward as it relates to Southfield infrastructure assets. In terms of the purpose of the study, the city of Southfield, then, as you may be aware, distinguished council that approached us and said, you know, our facilities on average are about 46 years old, and the economic life of an asset in general is measured in about 50-year cycles. So the assets have pretty much reached their economic useful life, and of course, the city is certainly mostly built out. So in face of those challenges, then, the impetus of the study was to understand the current facilities, current municipal facilities, and I'll show you which ones they are in a bit more detail. How is the space being utilized? What are the needs, current needs, five-year, 10-year needs, and so on? Are there any options for space optimization? And then what does the fiscal need look like, not just today, but projected out forward? The methodology that we applied in this study then involved a physical site visit, condition evaluation, code compliance assessment, structural assessment, site assessment, safety and security assessment, space optimization evaluation. Quite a bit of detail. So as Brett mentioned, this is going to be a very broad perspective strategic summary, and I'm glad to hear that you have a copy of the executive report as well, which certainly dives into more detail. In terms of the assets that have been evaluated, as you can see on the screen, that this map here is that we assessed quite a bit of municipal infrastructure, perhaps not everything, but quite a bit. The fire stations, certainly. The municipal campus, certainly. And I'll show you another slide to go more specifically into which parts of the municipal campus were evaluated. The Department of Public Works building, the library, for example, have been assessed. In terms of the Okay, oh, there we go. Forgive me, there was a delay in my response. In terms of the municipal, forecast municipal campus itself, as you can see, and we have a table to the right of the screen, and then a numbered context of a map on the left, the Civic Center pool, the Public Services Building, the Golf Pro Shop, all these facilities have all been assessed. And what we are presenting to you are key findings associated with these assessments. So let's dive into key findings. These are broad prospective quick findings to give you a broad context for what you are seeing. So currently, you will see that there is a condition state for FCI rating, and I will tell you what that is. So what we did was we used an industry benchmark to assess the current condition state of the infrastructure and also the future forecast state. And the industry benchmark is what is called a facility condition index value. And it's a very simple benchmark, really. It basically is a ratio. It is a ratio of two key capital numbers. The denominator, the top portion of the value in the ratio is what is the current need of the asset? And the bottom value is what is the replacement cost of the asset? So basically, what we are doing is we are assessing the amount of investment that is needed in relation to how much it would cost you to tear the entire facility down and build it up from scratch. And just to give you some percent numbers, because obviously, we don't have it in here, we are translating percent numbers into fair, poor condition states. In fact, I will show you, because that was another question that was raised. So when I mention that a facility in the table is in a good condition state, what this basically means is that the need for this facility to keep it in a good state is only about 10% or less of its entire replacement value. If I mention a facility that is in poor condition, however, what that suggests is that the amount of investment needed in this asset today, today, to bring it up to a good condition state is greater than 60% of the asset's replacement value. Okay. Having said so, let's just, if I may, go back to the presentation. As you can see, today, we had assets that are in good, fair, and marginal condition state. Unfortunately, if no investments are done onto those assets in about 10 years, a big portion of the assets are going to reach a marginal to poor condition state. With a total, this is a 10-year investment need of upwards of $166 million. This includes, this approximation includes a 3% annual inflation rate that chews away at your valuable dollars. It also includes a 30% soft cost increase. The reason being that we are doing such a big forecast 10 years out, and we wanted to make sure to try to capture to as much of an extent as we can in unforeseen market fluctuations and capital fluctuations. So I'd like to stay on this slide for a second and give you just a few seconds to look at this. I will revisit these numbers. So let me just proceed, if I may. So when we, obviously, when we saw the challenge at hand, the internal team along with the city team, John, Fred, and Tone and all key folks there, we kind of stepped back and asked us ourselves some strategic questions, which we would like to present to you in hopes of being able to contextualize this need a bit further. Two questions, we asked ourselves two questions, and we tried to be cognizant of two, we thought were strategic considerations in front of us as a project team, and we would like to present those to you as well. The first statement, the first question then was, the city has quite a bit of assets. The city should confirm the long-term need for these assets before making any investments. What do I mean by that? And I'm hoping this table contextualizes it a bit further for you. For example, in our community, we have five fire stations. The total need in the next 10 years is nearly $17 million. As you will appreciate at the onset, when we talked about methodology and purpose, the purpose of the study was not to do a specialty evaluation of the fire stations, of the service coverage for the city of Southfield, and so on. That we did not do. What we are merely stating here is that might it be worthwhile to perhaps do another evaluation, a fire station and fire safety evaluation of the community to assess the need of whether five stations may be adequate or not? Depending on the answers, of course, the investment dollars that you see in front of you may change. Same thing with the training tower. We have observed that the training tower is in really bad condition state, and it appears to us that the tower hadn't been used in quite a while. So of course, another question in front of you then is distinguished council that if there is a need for the tower, then of course, that investment of .3 million dollars has to be made. But if there is not, then might it be really worthwhile continuing with an investment of that magnitude? The ice arena and pool, great assets for the community. Of course, the question is, is based on its usage, given all the alternatives in the city and surrounding communities, are the revenues that are being produced, can they cover an $11 million potential need in the next 10 years? And some of this need stems from quite a bit of corrosion, quite a bit of code compliance issues and so on, and chip hazards and so on. Of course, you are owning golf courses, and our assessment was confined to the evaluation of the Golf Pro Shop. And of course, if the community is a city and council, then the decision is to move forward with maintaining a golf facility, then the pro shop needs to be upgraded. The pavilion, fantastic asset, of course, back when it was built, about 45, 30, 40 years later, then. It's an asset that requires quite a bit of investment, quite a bit of investment. Similar question as to the arena and pool. Yes, the pavilion sees usage, public usage. Do these usages generate enough revenue to be able to help offset a $10-plus million investment need or not? Finally, two more, the outdoor courtyard and underground parking lot. As you will appreciate, the site that the current forecasty campus is located in is surrounded by above-ground and open space parking lots. What is then the need for this underground space and the outdoor courtyard, which has a price tag of about $6.4 million? Lastly, the internal team made a, I thought, we thought a fantastic comment as we were going through those results, which we would like to share with you. That being, the Public Services Building needs quite a bit of investment, as you can see on the slide. The question then was, can this Public Services Building be shifted over to the DPW, Department of Public Works facility, and maybe handled that way?
Murat, just to clarify.
Yeah, yeah.
You might have misspoken there. We're referring to the Park Services Building that's at the east side, backside of the municipal campus. And that being, pretty much, reached its useful life. So building number eight on the map. And potentially, instead of rebuilding it in its place or building a new one there, could it be merged into DPW over at the other location?
Forgive me, I may have misspoken. Thank you for the clarification. John and team, any further comments before I move into the next set of questions?
No, sir. Nothing to add. Thank you.
So those are, so those are all assets that either through the course of interviewing the staff and assessing their function on our own team, rose to the top of, we should be having a conversation about whether there's a need for all of them going forward before you start sinking money into maintaining them. And it's not to say that you don't need fire stations, but as Murat pointed out, there was some discussion with Public Safety about undertaking a fire service study to see if you could provide the same level of service with perhaps one fewer station. But in every other case, it would be a conversation about whether the city needs an ice arena and a pool going forward, or et cetera.
Thank you. John, thank you, Brett.
All right. Oh, you still.
Yep. The second and last consideration and quick question that we asked ourselves as a team, and we would like to contextualize it for you then, is to consider how to best fulfill the needs for the municipal facilities in relation to maintaining what you currently have, perhaps renovating what you currently have, or even, yes, we did consider relocation of those facilities. What exactly do we mean now in the context of the second strategic question? We are, as you'll notice in this next slide and the map, we are specifically focused on the municipal campus buildings 11 through 20. And as you will appreciate, the first part of the buildings, for example, number 11, 13, or 14, the municipal facility, the Parks and Recreation Facility, the Public Services Facility, these are outward-facing, we call them outward-facing, facilities that the public directly engages with. And then, of course, on the backend, if you will, we have facilities number 17, for example, and 18, which are the court building, the public safety and jail, the legal and the public safety portion of the services that our community is being provided with. So I'm going to splash this screen in front of you, give you just a minute, and then I would like to contextualize what we more specifically mean by maintain, renovate, or relocate. Maintain, the maintain option is a baseline option for you to weigh the other two options against each other. We are not, as a team, suggesting to maintain the status quo. All we are doing is using it as a yardstick to measure the other options against, which is renovate and relocate. What is the baseline maintained? What it involves is basically, if something breaks, go fix the issue. It is an in-kind replacement or maintenance of current assets, HVAC systems, and so on and so forth, and basic upgrades. Of course, what is missing in that context of a maintain option, status quo option, is that we know that the space is insufficiently utilized. The public safety and jail and the fire facilities do not necessarily need critical facility requirements. The court building space is underutilized, and there's some significant enough code and safety upgrade needs that the court building really needs to be redone. And none of that would be included in a maintain option. In a renovate option, the facilities would be renovated and modernized. Space would be optimized to as much of an extent as possible. The court building would be demolished and rebuilt, and basic code compliance and architectural code compliance requirements would be addressed. Of course, in that case, as you will appreciate, what is still missing is the existing footprint, footprints, the overall framework of the set of facilities is not changing. There is going to be excessive space that is, that remains, which needs to be cleaned, lit, warmed, and just continue to be maintained. And lastly, the relocate option, as you may appreciate, includes then moving the existing outward-facing and legal and public safety systems into a right-sized, efficient 21st century modern facility. What we mean by right-sized is the facility would be designed to house current and anticipated 10-year projected needs for the community, nothing more, nothing less. Our internal team, however, though, lastly, before we leave this slide, wanted us to bring a few things to your attention on the relocate option, which is the costs will be, we'll be reviewing shortly, do not include land acquisition. The assumption is that an existing city land could be utilized for such a relocation if the distinguished panel decides that that might be an option to consider. There may be some de-restrictions on the current property that have not been assessed as part of this evaluation. And of course, the current municipal campus is considered a community center, and of course, there may be some community take on the relocation. Now, having said all that, wanted to splash this screen back on so that you can have a more direct comparison of the costs. What you're seeing here is, lastly, and this is the, I have two more slides just to give you a context. What this basically says is, if a decision was made to make a decision on renovation or relocation next year, this is just to give you a context, not that we are suggesting this decision should be made in 2021. But if, just for a point of comparison, if the decision were made, you are looking at a $104 million investment in renovation, $86 million investment in relocation. The status quo maintain would only be $38 million. However, as we discussed, there is a, we call it a hidden cost of $76 million. The car, if the asset, if we were to think of them as a car, the brakes are going to go out on you in the next 10 years. The carburetor may go out on you in the next 10 years. All these costs are coming your way. There's no avoiding them. So we want to, you to see the hidden cost here as well. Lastly, we wanted to bring this slide to your attention, and I'm going to quickly shift back and forth between those two. What this slide is suggesting is that the longer a delay occurs in making a decision because of the significance of the need for that decision, the more it's going to cost. Just inflation alone is going to eat away at our precious resources. So the investment amount we talked about, which was, if it were 2021, let's say, I'm taking it just randomly, I'm not making any statements about any recommendations. If a renovation amount was $104 million, just by delaying the decision by about 10 years, is going to add a $30 million price tag to it. This concludes my portion of the presentation. I wanted to leave you with those two strategic considerations that we walked through in further detail. And with that, I would like to hand it back over to the moderator. Thank you.
Thank you for that very comprehensive presentation. So a whole lot to take in at one time, but we'll try to work at it this evening. I'm going to start with our Madam Pro team, with any questions at this point.
Um, no. After the Council Presidents' Meeting, I just, it's a job to look at and it's assess, you know, what we can do and what we can't do. So no further questions for me this evening. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Taylor?
I have no additional questions. I do want to say thank you for the presentation. It is a very heavy topic, and you did a great job of explaining it and presenting it. So I want to say thank you for that, and it does give us a lot to think about. I know that we've had several conversations with John McCrina about this and Fred. So it seems like we're going to have to make some decisions as to what we're going to do going forward and in the near future. But this gives us a lot to think about, and are very well presented. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, Ms. Banks?
Thank you. Before I begin, Council President, is there a way that we could have a copy of this presentation sent to us electronically? I wish I had had this earlier just to review. I mean, it was an excellent presentation, but there's a lot of information here. So can we have this sent to us?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Again, this was an excellent presentation. Thank you. Um, again, this was an excellent presentation. Um, I have to go back to some of the slides. Some of them I thought were a little confusing, um, where, you know, the under the section, the city has a lot of assets, and there was also a slide of recommendations for different areas that you felt were immediate, um, versus we could wait a little bit longer. I'm not sure if I agree with some of those. Personally, I think we have a beautiful campus that we have created over the years, and, um, I would like to see us slowly maintain in order of priorities and possibly, I guess you could say, maybe combine or merge some areas together. Um, but I I'm not in favor of, you know, a brand-new facility. Um, I agree we need to maintain it, just like we need to maintain our cars. But, um, I I don't have the slide presentation in front of me, so I don't know when this is coming back, or this is just an FYI. I'm a little confused on this. Is it, was this just an FYI presentation, or is it going to come back at a later time, or?
Oh, it definitely will be back.
Okay.
So we'll we'll make sure the presentation gets out to everybody, and we'll have another run at it.
Right, because, again, there were some departments I'm questioning why they felt there was a need to, um, upgrade them when I just thought, within the last few years, they have been upgraded. And other areas, you know, example, what are we going to do with the chambers? I didn't even see addressed in there. And maybe that's not even part of the study. Or was it part of the study?
Uh, Council President, this is Red. I could respond to a few of those questions if it's helpful.
Thank you. Yes.
Um, I mean, we certainly can make sure that all the information that was gathered here is circulated. I'm not, I'm not sure why it wasn't sent already, but the, we could try to boil up a lot of content to an executive summary and a presentation. As I mentioned, every asset that was studied was provided an individual report with a detailed listing of of needs for that, for that asset, um, that is in the hands of the city staff, John McCarina and, um, Antonio, uh, to guide them in the next ten years with, you know, capital needs and replacements and systems upgrades or whatever at each of the facilities that were in the study. Um, so that's, I mean, that's really, regardless of any of the higher-level decision that we put into the the presentation here today, that that data is all there. In fact, it's it's really in their hands as an electronic format, helps serve as a CIP document. Um, and and the the presentation, trying to compare relocation versus renovation versus, um, maintain, was really meant to try to make sure that Council understood the magnitude of those of those differences. I think staff had had asked that we make that comparison because there had been some comments or questions, I think, circulating about whether the city shouldn't consider relocating. And in fact, when you look at the total cost over the ten-year period, it's, it, it, the costs alone don't make one answer necessarily jump out to us as being the right thing to do. So we we were certainly not trying to make a recommendation or a position over over what should happen with the City Hall campus, but more so try to give the the total dollar values out there, so.
Okay, um, and I'm sorry, maybe I didn't understand something, or I'm not listening very good. But example, where in this presentation, or is it a totally different presentation? Does it address, and I'm just throwing this out, example, the council chambers, where in this presentation is this?
So the the the, um, council chamber itself being deficient for, um, access and life safety and, you know, electrical upgrades and all those types of things that I know we did under another analysis, is going to be included in all of the deferred needs for that particular building, just like any conference rooms that may be, um, that may be needed to be updated, or all of the elevators that are ninety-eight A compliant, or the escalators that in are in the courthouse, I think, that are not functioning. Um, so all of that, it's really just going to be one of the line items in that particular building's assets that's going to roll up to that hundred and sixty-six million dollar total that they brought out on the one slide. So this presentation, I guess, doesn't specifically break down, just because we were staying at a pretty high level, each of the individual hundreds of objects that that each of the facilities has.
Okay, so, uh, because I was going to say, I don't recall if I saw anything, for example, just the main municipal complex, example, to address the elevators on that one slide. That's why it, um, I I guess I'll have to review the presentation whenever we receive it. And Council President, in the future, I mean, I just think it's really important to receive these PowerPoints ahead of time. That way, um, you know, I have nothing to go back to right now with my questions. So I guess we'll just leave it at that. But thank you very much.
Well, I think, as it was mentioned by the clerk already, that we weren't aware that, uh, the presentation was coming this evening. So, um, we always do our best to try to make sure that that happens. So, but we'll get that out to you. Hopefully, um, we can get that to Council this evening or tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Yep. Uh, Mr. Brightwell?
Yeah, I want to, uh, I want to thank Brett and his team for for this presentation. Um, and Mrs. Zorn will attest that this is, uh, something that I've asked for, I think, in twenty sixteen or twenty seventeen. We were at a meeting over at the, um, Round Building, and as indicated, we need a need assessment. And this is, I think, it's taken a couple of years, obviously, probably giving getting the, uh, the money to do it and also getting the team to do it. But this this came out of, uh, we were being hit by different, um, individuals and different bodies in the city about this building, that building. And so at the time, we were being able to tail wagging the dog about what we need to do with our facilities. So this this served that particular purpose. If it comes down to pipe that we are being, someone is, uh, entity or a segment of the population is complaining about them, we have our list of things to do. This is about like you own a house. The house needs different things at different times, a roof of driveway cement. So this served that particular purpose. And I think it it will come down as a decision-making and strategic planning tool. Uh, if we, we need to make some some decisions, uh, because time will deteriorate anything, and, uh, we have to either, um, get a team together, uh, by way of, um, the administration, also Council, to strategically think about what we need to do, and also what is most useful to the citizens of the city of Southfield. But this is, this this item serves that, you know, as a, um, a need assessment, that it, if the name itself dictate what the reasons were, why I've pushed for this. And and I think Fred has a date, I mean, when we were in the, uh, meeting over at the Round Building, I think it started in sixteen. And, um, and so I've been pushing for this since then. Uh, but it served, it would serve as a, um, planning tool, and if nothing else, a tool to roll out our our repairs and our renovations as they as they come along. And so when a citizen or a group complain about our facility, we have a list of things that need to be done. And those things that are to be done, they will be prioritized. You can't do everything all at once. We prioritize them, uh, from the, um, health and safety standpoint, and, uh, what what needs to be done most, uh, most urgently. So, uh, Red and, uh, John and and everybody else, I want to thank you guys for bringing this forward. And I I see it as as a tool, a guiding tool for for the citizens, for the city, and also the administration, and also Council, what we want to attack first. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Brightwell. Uh, Mr. Hoskins?
Thank you. Um, I want to, I'd like to say that this was a really good, uh, presentation, and it kind of piggyback off of both, um, Councilwoman Banks and Councilman Brightwell. Um, one, I I look forward to, you know, uh, I look forward to seeing, um, the presentate, getting the presentation and, uh, a report that kind of outlines everything that, all the needs that we need to to look at. Um, and this is something that we definitely need to, sounds like we need to talk about this and work out something sooner rather than later, as, um, as we, the longer we wait on some things, the more it's going to cost. Um, and I feel like I might have some questions, but I also feel like they might be answered once we get, uh, once I get a chance to read, uh, some of the documents that are be, that are going to be coming to us, uh, soon. So I'll just, I'll hold my questions from now. I know we're probably going to be talking about this a lot, um, a number of times, um, before we have to make some decisions. So I'll just end it with that and say, I'm glad we did this, and I'm glad we, uh, are certainly starting the process for this.
Thank you. Yeah, this is our not, this is not our first run at this discussion, but we want to get the ball rolling. So you're absolutely right. Uh, Mr. Mandelbaum.
Yes, thank you. Um, I think this presentation is excellent. It definitely shows us, uh, how much, uh, work our facilities need. Although I am a little shocked that, uh, we have so many in fair condition that they haven't been really maintained throughout the years. Um, you know, I guess, once, once we get down to the the nitty-gritty of it and figure out, you know, what we need to concentrate on, what's the most beneficial from a a community standpoint, from a city standpoint, you know, obviously, the pool, um, and some of the parks and rec things are are big-ticket items, um, but they they probably have some of the most community benefit. Um, so it's going to get interesting how we're going to, um, determine what what we do first, or what the order is, and 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 how we we do that. One thing that that I've been thinking about, um, last year, when the mayor and I went to San Antonio, uh, for the National League of Cities, they were renovating a their old historic City Hall building. And we took a tour, and one of the questions that, um, I asked, knowing that we were going through this assessment, was how are they funding it? Because it was millions of dollars. And I don't know if this applies only to to their area, or if we can do this here in in Southfield or Michigan. But they were able to, uh, take out bonds, similar how we do with the water, without going for, um, voter approval to get money to fix their or rebuild their historic City Hall. I don't know if that's something that we can do here as well, that that may help take the burden off of of the, um, the taxpayers. I don't know if that's something that we can handle financially. Obviously, tho- these are things that have to be looked at. But that's just a a an idea that I was thinking about, going through, you know, their exercise of how they came up with money to redo their, uh, City Hall. So again, that's just something to think about. But I definitely, I definitely liked the presentation. And now we we have a starting point of what we need to do, and I guess approximately how much it's going to cost as well. So, uh, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mandelbaum. Uh, anyone else on the line have, uh, any questions on this item before we move forward? As again, as I said, we'll make sure we get this information to everyone, uh, ASAP. And, uh, again, you know, maybe in the fall, if we decide to do, uh, retreat again, unfortunately, we aren't able to this year. But, um, you know, this could definitely be a great item for us to discuss. So give us a little more time. So, okay.
Mr. President, our deputy, uh, city, our deputy city administrator just sent out the summary to to all council members. That's FYI.
Thank you so much.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Dorn?
Uh, thank you. I want to, uh, just e- echo, uh, Councilman Brightwell's comments. We started this process January ninth, two thousand and seventeen, at the Roundhouse. Also, Ms. Morris was with us, and, uh, former Councilman, uh, Don Ficassi, uh, was with us at that meeting. And we went over, uh, a number of facility concerns. And, uh, item I, and I of item D facility concerns was, uh, uh, the comprehensive needs assessment. Took a while to go get through the study and and how we were going to fund this. Want to remind, uh, Council, this is how do you, how do you eat an elephant, a bite at a time? Financing is an option. Mr. President, you were with myself and Alice Sevis when we were at that P three conference in Texas a couple of years ago. That was one of my interests in this. And, you know, keep in mind, we have a general fund, we have a library millage, parks and rec, court fees, you know, and I think some of you have heard me privately speak that we need to be working towards a goal of a more equitable funding source on our courts. And, um, so I think this is going to take a lot of creative financial solutions. Uh, if an amortization on a commercial piece of property is thirty-nine and a half years, you have a hundred and sixty-six million dollars, you know, I have consistently said we should be putting four to six million dollars a year into our facilities. And had that been happening over the last forty years, just going through a repetitive cycle, we would be in a much stronger position. The last, uh, six years, you know, it's been keeping the, uh, the the boxes functional, tight, and dry, making sure the roofs are solid. And you've done that part. But when you get into the in-depth analysis that has been done as part of this report, it details every transformer, you know, every boiler, uh, fire safety systems, condition of windows, doors, it's it's very in-depth. What you have is, uh, in the the PowerPoint that, uh, Mr. McCarina sent out, is a very high level. But there's behind, you know, far more depth to that level. So, you know, a-again, this is, you know, will be a slow and gradual process. Uh, as our finance director always speaks to about sustainable, uh, Southfield, um, it's how how we pay as a- as we go. Um, so, you know, this is an exciting time and an exciting opportunity to figure out how we'll preserve these assets to serve our community for the next forty years. Thank you.
All right.
Council President, if I may add a comment?
Absolutely.
This is Ken Cyber. I would agree with Councilwoman Banks that, um, we have a great campus that we've, um, done a lot to. Um, it is centrally located in our city and is, um, just off two freeways. So it's a, it's a very easy place to get to. Uh, and we are working on a city center, uh, development, uh, continuing to make it stronger and stronger. Um, uh, I too would like to see the full report. Um, can't comment on a lot of things this evening, but, uh, I want to put it out there that anything that happens to the forty-sixth District Court, and I think times have changed, and that court is really not, um, what we need today, um, as far as the layout. Um, we really have to, um, go to the other users of the court. And I'm talking about Franklin, Beverly Hills, Southfield Township, and Bingham Farms. As, um, I do not believe in any way that Southfield, uh, the city of Southfield should be funding, um, this building. Uh, we are serving multiple communities. I think that that needs to be, uh, figured in any kind of redevelopment of the Forty-Sixth District Court. Thank you.
Now, thank you. And Mr. Mary, that's that's an excellent point. So again, so we want to make sure we keep that in mind moving forward, too. Anything else, um, from the body before we move forward? If not, we want to thank our presenters once again this evening for your comprehensive presentation. As the clerk has told us, the, uh, they have already been, they've been sent to everyone already. So please take some time to to take a look over them, and, uh, they'll be back at another study session or retreat, or however we decide to do it at a later date. Thank you, guys.
Thank, thank you, Council, and, uh, to the staff that, uh, really, uh, worked with us quite a bit on this. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, next we'll go to items two and three. Items two is a receipt for bids for rifle ammunition for the police department, and three is a receipt for bids for nine-millimeter, uh, ammunition for the police department.
Good evening, Council. It's Detective Restem of the Southfield Police Department. Um, the police department is requesting to purchase seventy-five thousand rounds of two-two-three ammunition. This is the rifle ammunition that's used for the patrol rifles, as well as the SRT teams. Uh, the purch- Uh, the purchasing department obtained one bid from Vantus. Which is also the sole source provider for our area. The bid was in the amount of forty-four thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents. Funds are available for the purchase. From the twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-one council-approved police support division budget and regarding the nine-millimeter ammunition. Uh, the department is requesting to purchase eighty thousand rounds of nine-millimeter federal premium ammunition. Uh, the purchasing department received one bid from Kiesler's. Uh, the bid amount was in the amount of twenty-four thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars. Funds are available from the twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-one council-approved. Police Support Division budget for that as well.
All right, that seems straightforward enough to me. Um, we'll go to council, the rest of council as well, though, uh, and Ms. Taylor, I'll start with you.
Well, I have no questions. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Banks.
No questions. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Brightwell.
Uh, no questions.
Okay, Mr. Hoskins.
Uh, no questions for me. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Mandelbaum.
Um, I just had one question. Um, how are you able to find ammunition? I heard that there's like a uh shortage across the U.S.
Yeah, it's actually uh very difficult. Uh, thankfully, law enforcement. Does have first dibs and this specific ammunition that we do order and have been ordering is premium ammunition, which. By nature is purchased a little bit less by the general public, but these both uh orders. And this quantity are drop shipped directly from the manufacturer themselves and facilitated through the vendors. So uh, they usually treat orders of this magnitude, excuse me, specifically from law enforcement as a priority, so. Uh, your, what you've heard, Councilman, is accurate, uh thankfully. Uh, and with that being said, we, it still will take a little bit longer for us to obtain this ammunition than usual, but thankfully. Our route to obtain the ammunition is a little bit uh faster than the general public.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, great. Um, Madam Protem. Ms. Morris, are you on? Okay, maybe. I don't know if our call dropped or something. Uh, but any other questions from anyone else on the call? Um, if not, we'll just move this to to uh consent agenda for our next meeting. Thank you.
Yep, thank you, sir. Take care, council.
All right, you as well. Okay, um, next we'll go to item four. Approval of the cost participation agreement with the Village of Beverly Hills for resurfacing thirteen-mile road from Evergreen. Uh, to Southfield Road. Lois Lee, are you on this one or?
Yes, I am. Good evening.
All right, good evening.
Uh, so as you are aware, this section of thirteen mile has been under construction since mid-June and on schedule to be completed by the end of October. Uh, in addition to the asphalt road rehabilitation, the road geometrics will be improved to allow for a continuous three-lane cross-section. And the project includes new sidewalk along the south side of thirteen mile where none had existed previously. The jurisdiction of thirteen mile road is shared between the Village of Beverly Hills and the City of Southfield. On this project, Beverly Hills is taking the lead, which means they are the entity that has entered into the cost share agreement with the. Michigan Department of Transportation. And now Southfield and Beverly Hills must enter into a cost participation agreement, so the city. Can reimburse the village for our share of the project costs. The total project cost is approximately three point two million. Southfield's share for fifty percent of the road cost plus one hundred percent of the new sidewalk. Including contingencies is seven hundred sixty-four thousand eight hundred provided by the Road Bond Construction Fund. Now, this project receives the benefit of one point seven five million in federal dollars. And also, the Road Commission for Oakland County is contributing. To resurface the intersection of thirteen mile and Southfield Road that is one hundred percent at their cost, but included in the scope of work. So this concludes my presentation. If there's consensus by council, this matter will appear on the September fourteenth consent agenda. I'm available, of course, for any questions.
Sure thing. Um, Ms. Banks.
I'm just curious, why is this coming to us like after the road is almost complete? I realize that um this is a shared cost and Beverly Hills had the original contract, but. Why wouldn't they share the cost with us earlier? I mean, what if for some reason we disagreed with something?
Right.
I mean, it's it's like, it's like too late now because the road on the side, the. You know, area for the sidewalks is about to be laid, so why is, yeah, I'm just curious.
Yeah, well, Beverly Hills, when the project cost started to come in and they sent over their first invoice. And when we were starting to process, I was like, wait a minute. This first invoice, I don't have an agreement yet from you, you know, to formally be able to pay my share, so I just. Think um with the crazy spring we've had with Beverly Hills that that um ball just got dropped and so. It was a bit of a scramble for them to put an agreement together quickly and get it over to us. We have invoices, you know, that we can't process until. Until that agreement is fully executed.
Okay, that's a good answer. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Mr. Brightwell.
So Lee, the um, our portion is higher because the sidewalk is in Southfield?
Correct.
Okay, otherwise it would be fifty-fifty. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Hoskins.
Uh, Councilwoman Banks and Councilman Brightwell, like they both uh asked my question, so I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Mr. Mandelbaum.
No questions. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Um, Ms. Morris.
I'm here. I'm sorry, I I could hear you, but you couldn't hear me on the uh last item, but uh no questions for me. Thank you.
Okay, you didn't have, did you, you didn't have anything else on the last one, did you?
No, sir, no, no.
Okay, all right, just wanted to make sure. All right, yep, and Ms. Taylor?
Uh, yes, nothing new. Uh, my questions have been answered. Thank you very much.
All right, then we'll move this item to consent agenda for our next regular meeting. Thank you for the uh, Lee.
Thank you.
And I don't know, um, item five is our discussion on the Fourth Amendment to consent uh judgment. Dealing with the Boron Oil Company on Lassa Road.
Yeah, thanks, thank you, Mr. President. This is, this is Jeff Spence, the Assistant City Planner. Uh, the owner of uh the property in question. Um, which is located two-six-four-five-zero Lassa Road. Uh, we would be on the uh southeast corner of the property. Uh, approach the city with regard to an amendment to the existing consent judgment. Uh, for Boron Oil on this particular site. Uh, they've been through three amendments already, uh, so they are seeking a a fourth amendment. Um, basically what they're looking to do would be to remove a portion of the existing building. And then convert um the two overhead canopies into one canopy. Uh, in in uh. Uh, if I, if I may to the clerk, did we have a PowerPoint for this?
Yeah, it's up, Jeff. Yep.
Great, yeah, it just, it just came up just now. Uh, so yeah, so this is helpful in in Lee seeing the property itself. Uh, again, uh, the southeast corner of Alasa Road and Northwestern Highway. Uh, if you could go to the next slide, please. Uh, little bit closer uh view of the property. Uh, you can see, um, you can see the two existing canopies. Uh, that have been, that are on the site right now. Uh, if you can go to the next slide, uh, we'll see the proposal uh that the owner of the property is is looking to do on the site. Uh, so you see that the the gas pumps would be relocated and then one brand-new canopy would be installed. Uh, I'd originally thought uh last week that the canopy actually went all the way to the building. I see that it does not. Um, so the canopy would just be over the existing pumps uh on the property itself. Uh, so again, what the what the property owner is looking to do would be to amend the consent judgment. Um, to revise the site plan and then provide uh this brand-new canopy layout. As well as uh some additional conversion on the inside of the building for the food shop. Um, I do know that uh the property owner, uh, as well as uh Attorney John Hamood are on the line right now. Uh, so if I would say, sir, if if you're ready to uh to move to them for any additional comment.
Totally, go right ahead.
Thank you, uh, uh, Dr. Cruz and and counsel and uh Mr. Spence as well for for the introduction. This is Johnny Hamood, attorney for uh. Uh, Mr. Hamadi and and the entity that owns the station there. Just briefly, uh, I I was involved and retained for the purpose of drafting the proposed consent judgment. Which I forwarded to Mr. Spence and others at the city. Um, my uh. Plan would be to, if this is approved, obviously, get the consent judgment signed. Uh, and then recorded with the Register of Deeds in Oakland County and Oakland County Circuit Court. Uh, but as to any design issues, I think it, Mr. Salama, who is our architect, uh, is he is present and he'd be probably better suited for any questions regarding that.
Okay, go right ahead. Is he available?
Yeah, uh, I I I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Jim Hamadi. I'm the owner and I'm sitting right next to Mr. Salama is uh the engineer. And uh, uh, if you have any questions, you know, we can answer them for you.
Sounds good, and I'll turn to council then. Um, council, uh, we'll start with Mr. Brightwell.
Uh, uh, no questions, no questions.
All right, Mr. Hoskins.
Uh, no questions for me on this one. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Mr. Mandelbaum.
Nothing for me. Thank you.
All right, uh, Ms. Morris.
That's three. You got no questions?
Any questions, Ms. Morris? I'm sorry, I couldn't.
I don't know what's going on. Can you hear me? Hello?
Okay, now now I can.
Okay, I'm sorry, no questions for me. Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, what's happening with this phone?
No, no, no questions for me either. Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Banks.
Thank you. Um, I think this is um a nice plan and I like the flow of that. Um, to Mr. Hamadi, are you will be removing the um the service bays? Or I I think you have service bays at the front page. Is that correct?
Yeah, we had the service bays. Uh, Mrs. Banks, first of all, how are you and uh I hope everything is good.
Thank you.
Yeah, eh eh, we had the ser- I I, we stopped doing service about three years ago.
Oh dear, okay.
Yeah, we lost when when the economy tanked and um, you know, federal mogul moved and all the business, we lost a lot of the office buildings around us. We. Most of our customers left with that, so we kind of shut down. Uh, for loss of business. And now we're trying to expand the C store. Actually. We're taking a portion from the front of the business out and we're just going to expand inwards. And then doing, you know, a nicer layout for customers for better traffic flow. Easier traffic flow.
Well, it definitely looks like it's going to be an easier traffic flow with your new proposed. Um, pumps where they're at on the canopy, so. Um, I just wanted to say, you know, I hope you pursue this plan. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I totally agree. Um, anyone else on the on the call that wishes to speak on this matter? Otherwise, we can move this to consent for our next regular meeting.
Yeah, Mr. Mr. President, thank you. And and really what we'll be seeking then on the fourteenth. Uh, will will be council's authorization uh for the city attorney to work with the petitioner. Uh, to put together the the consent judgment and and take it through the the legal system.
Got you. That's right. All right, sounds good.
Thank you all.
Thank you all so much. I appreciate everything.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now move to item six. Um, uh, discussion regarding the extension of Arbor Town Homes at two zero three zero zero Civic Drive.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Um, if as you recall, um, a number of years ago. Uh, the property directly west of of City Hall here on the corner of Central Park Boulevard and in Civic Center Drive. Uh, went through um quite a transformation from an office building. To um, you know, a multiple family or or a uh multiple-story residential development. Uh, we went through an overlay development district on that. Uh, I believe that that was back in two thousand and thirteen, possibly, I believe. Um, in two thousand and sixteen, um, the petitioner uh entered into uh. Uh, P Z R O D D sixteen dash zero 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 one. For additional uh units along central, along Civic Center Drive. Uh, as well as units on the north side of the property. Um, we went through the O D D, the O D D got approved uh in two thousand and sixteen. Based upon the uh conditions of the overlay development district, the the agreement. Um, you have eighteen months to to get started on the project. Um, the the petitioner was not able to do that. Uh, and this particular uh O D D basically expired in two thousand and eighteen. Um, what the petitioner is looking to do, though, is he would like to get an extension from council on that P Z R. Uh, so he can continue to to move forward with development. Um, but obviously, they would need the uh the council's blessing to extend the the O D D agreement. Um, and that's why he's uh before you this evening would just be to discuss that possibility. Uh, so I do know that uh Mr. Gollkarp and then uh Mr. Mike Pazola are on the line this evening. And uh, like to give them the opportunity just to uh explain what they're looking to do over the next year. Again, in the hope that council would extend their O D D agreement.
Okay, gentlemen, go right ahead.
Uh, Mike, do you want to start so you can sort of explain it?
Um, excuse me. Can you hear me?
Yes, I was on mute. Sorry, I can hear you.
Okay, good. Um, Ga- Gaal, um, you um, you had, you 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 kind of explained it to me really, really good a little bit ago, but um, I. You know, we're here to um, again, um, as Jeff uh mentioned, to try and get uh get this thing going again. Um, I can um, I'm here representing um Design House, um, trying um, um, answering any um site-related questions and such. But um, um, you know, Gaal, if um, you know, um, the reasoning, um. Why won't we want to get this one again, um, you know?
Uh, sure, so I'll chime in. Um, I I thought they wanted the explanation of the site plan, but we can just go for the reasons. So Arbor Lofts has been going for, what is it now, six, seven years? Uh, we've been, you know, well over eighty-five to ninety percent occupied. Um, we came back before council and planning commission a few years back. Uh, to add uh housing in the parking lot. Originally, you know, the office building had, I think, five hundred parking spaces. And, you know, for residential, you don't need that many. So we looked at good uses for the site. And based on the success of the current building. Um, we came back and said, hey, maybe it's a good time to build um some new apartments in the parking lot that is just a sea of asphalt. Um, o- over time, we were also awaiting the plan for the property across the street. You know, the new city center. And I understand, you know, it looks like there's some progress made there. So based on that and um, you know, pretty steady, strong demand. Uh, we wanted to uh re-up our agreement, the approval, and hopefully proceed and provide some uh new plans. Uh, updated plans of what we have already approved, uh, been approved. And see if we can get some more residents. So I I think that's, you know, hopefully that's in a nutshell. It's not a major complicated thing, but we would. It's not a major complicated thing, but we would love to add some more units if possible.
If I may, sir, the chair, if we could, I know that we have a number of additional slides. If we can kind of just run through the next three or four slides, that will give kind of the council and then the public who are watching have an idea of what was approved back in 2016. Those are being- those slides being run through right now. And you can just stop on that one. So as you can see, along Civic Center Drive, units along Civic Center, the existing three carports, and then at the back on the north side, some additional units there.
Okay. All right. Anything else before we take some questions?
Again, only if, you know, only if I may, sir, that they're just looking for an extension of the ODD from 2016. Any changes that are made? And again, the ODD is very specific that the city planner can make minor modifications. But any major changes to the plan as you see it right now would have to go through the planning commission and city council in the future. So again, all they're seeking is just an extension of the existing plan, what you see here. And should there be any changes, those would have to come back to you for approval.
And again, the extension is for approximately, how much longer?
Well, we would be looking at a year in order to give them the opportunity to at least move forward here.
Okay, just checking. Just wanted to know for sure. Okay, thank you. Mr. Hoskins, do you have anything?
Nope, no questions for me. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Mandelbaum.
No questions for me either. I remember reviewing this plan and thought it was great. So I'm fine if they need more time and try to figure it out. Thanks.
Great, okay. Ms. Morris?
No questions for me. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Taylor?
No questions. This is fine. I remember this project. So yeah, no questions at all. Thank you.
Yep. Ms. Banks?
Thank you. I also remember this project when it was presented. Question to Mr. Karp. Why haven't you started on this project? This was originally presented to council in 2016.
Thank you. It's a good question. I would have loved to have started it. But a couple of things. One, demand. You know, the current project was, if you recall, we had Lawrence Tech students in there. And one of the things when banks look at projects, they say, how long are you going to have the relationship with Lawrence Tech? So we've had a very consistent relationship with them to date. But now with, you know, the current situation, those are one of the things that were sort of out there. What's going to happen in the future? Is Lawrence Tech expanding? Lawrence Tech, of course, also added some dorms. And they wanted to see how many of the units would stay occupied. So actually, it's done pretty well. And based on that, you know, really a fin- more of a financing question. And also across the street, many of the questions came, what is going to happen with city center? And very few- the questions came up all the time from different lenders and investors, what is happening across the street? So now it seems like there's some progress there. That's one of the reasons that there's renewed interest to get our project back up and add more units.
Thank you. Do you know when you may consider, like, breaking ground for this?
Recently, we have the approved plans. The building department has them sitting on their desk, ready to, you know, present back to us. We did go out for bid over the last month. So that helps a lot because, you know, one day you hear, you know, there's plenty of staff to build things. And then one day you hear lumber is really expensive. But the pricing seems to be coming in okay. That's another issue, as you know. The economy was so crazy the last three, four years that prices weren't way up. And you also had a hard time finding people. But now it seems to have steadied. And we went out for bid. So hopefully, in the next two, three months, we'll have some good estimates.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Banks. Mr. Brightwell?
Yes, I remember this project also. I think when Arbor Loft first opened, I went over for the open house. It's a very nice facility. And I was pleased when you wanted to bill out to add the other units. And I don't have a problem with the extension. But you mentioned several negatives, you know, the price of lumber and the- and I know the economy is going. You know, things are really uncertain now. So this is probably a difficult question. What is the probability of this project being successful and/or being completed?
Well, that's a question for me every day. I say, can I start tomorrow, please? One of the things we always consider is weather as well. Our goal would be to start doing footings and breaking ground, probably April or May. And it would take us, you know, we have to go do all the bidding, finalize the financing, and then really see where the situation is at. But it seems like there's a very large renewed demand for apartments in somewhat of a suburb. You know, a lot of the growth was in the cities over the last four or five years. And now over the last, since March and April, there's a very strong demand in the suburbs again. So that's one of the other reasons that there's a renewed interest to proceed with this project.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
I'm done. Thank you, sir.
If it was up to me, I would start tomorrow morning. I have a shovel in my car and I'm ready to go. Now I just got to get everybody else aboard.
Well, let me just follow up just briefly. So you have market studies that indicate to you that you can be successful. I know the last time when we approved this, I think you shared some info with us several years ago. But so now you have market study, I mean, market data indicate that apartments are coming back in the suburbs and that your property can be successful?
Yes, and there's a lot of new projects that have been built over the last four or five years, ground up in the neighboring communities. And when you see that happening, you know there's a lot of market data to indicate that not only is there a demand, but the cost to build the new ground-up apartments, the rents will meet those. So that's where we're at.
Okay, I'm done. Thanks.
Thank you, sir, for asking that. Definitely important stuff.
Can you just remind me again, it may be on here, I just can't see it on the little map here, but the average square footage of these units and the approximate price range?
I can tell you that the current building, we're renting out one bedrooms that are about 650 to 750 square feet for $1,250 a month, right about there. Two bedrooms go for maybe $1,650. They're probably about 1,200 square feet. The new project is basically 800, I'm sorry, 600 to about 1,000 square foot units. And the price range would, you know, based on, you know, the market data we have, would be between probably $1,100 and $2,000 a month.
Okay, gotcha. All right.
By the way, over the last few months, a lot of people now want home offices. So demand was the largest for one bedrooms. Now all of a sudden, people want two bedrooms, you know, the second bedroom being an office. So it's really interesting how it's been going up and down.
Well, that was the one thing, you know, I think that Council and Brightwell was saying that I was thinking as well. It's just, you know, in terms of the housing market, I keep, you know, I'm hearing different things, mostly that is going to go in the wrong direction in a while. But I think some of our younger folks that don't want to buy homes and at the size out here in Southfield that most of ours are, that these are going to be more attractive. Like, I live somewhere.
And, you know, one of the things that people really like is new. If you offer something new, they're very excited. Not that, you know, what's there isn't, you know, successful and a nice place to live. But people love new, you know, like new cars and new homes. And this is one of the options.
Okay. Anyone else on the call wish to speak on this matter?
Mr. President, I would just add that I was going to say people want new. I keep hearing this over and over. But houses do not stay on the market long in Southfield. There is a demand to live here. And all the realtors tell me there is a housing shortage. Their inventory is low. And we're seeing sales. Houses sell within hours. There have been several people contacting me, looking for housing. And they said it's sold underneath them. And I know these are rentals, but there is this demand here for new floor plans, new constructions. I think this will be very successful. And it's, again, it's a great location.
All right, agreed. Mr. Zorn, did you have something?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay.
Happy to see this move forward. Good project.
All right, very good. Okay, then, well, thank you for the presentation. Then we'll move this request forward to our next meeting.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Item seven is the discussion regarding special land use and site plan review for Great Lakes Water Authority.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. So this is the existing Great Lakes Water Authority property, water reservoirs on East Street. So we are just north of Eight Mile Road on the east side of East. Currently, there are two reservoirs on this particular piece of property, along with the pump house. The proposal, if you go to the next slide, a little bit closer view of the existing reservoirs with the pump house to the south. Next slide, please. Current zoning, single-family residential. Next slide, please. Existing conditions, you can see via this photo, the existing reservoirs are quite a distance off of East Street. Next slide. And this is the proposal that Great Lakes Water Authority is bringing forward. The on-the-site plan, they would be constructing two new water reservoirs, round reservoirs, each one containing 5 million gallons each, each one about 27 and a half feet tall, along with a brand-new pump house in between. Those reservoirs would be constructed first. And then upon completion and when they're ready to go, the existing reservoirs in the back would then be demolished. Next slide, please. Yeah, that one right there. So you can, this is kind of a superimposed, you can see the existing reservoirs adjacent to the proposed reservoirs along East Street. Next slide, please. Now, these subsequent slides basically kind of give you a bird's-eye view of what the particular reservoirs would look like. Next slide, please. Next slide. I just want to, on this particular slide, pay particular attention to the existing fencing. The fencing currently around the entire site is the chain link with barbed wire on top. Through some negotiations with the petitioner, the fencing that you see there in the existing conditions will actually be replaced with a non-climb type of fencing. So we will have no barbed wire along East Street on the north side of the driveway here. The remaining fencing currently on the property would become a black vinyl-coated chain link. Again, what we're trying to do is kind of get rid of the aesthetic look of barbed wire along this site, understanding that the site does need security as a water facility. But we are looking for a way to at least make it more presentable along East Street with a different kind of fence. You can go to the next slide, please. Again, these are the reservoirs as if you were looking to the north or to the west or to the east. Next slide, please. This is the pump house. Next slide. This is the anti-climb fence that I had talked about earlier. So this particular fence would replace the chain link with the barbed wire on top along East Street on the north side of the driveway. So it does run for a majority of the site along East Street. And again, it has a much better look than a fence with barbed wire on top. Next slide, please. So again, the proposal is for these brand-new water reservoirs along the front of East Street, brand-new landscaping. And then ultimately, in the other phase, the second phase, removal of the existing reservoirs. This is a project that's going to take a number of years. And I will, I'll let the petitioner kind of get into those facts. I do know that Dennis Tinkler, along with the rest of his team, are available to kind of follow up with additional comments on this project.
Thanks, Jeff. Yeah, this is Andrew Jurgens with GLWA. Just to give you an idea of some of the project drivers behind this. So the existing facilities were built in the '60s and they're at the end of service life. So the existing reservoirs are in pretty poor condition and require structural repairs pretty frequently. Additionally, this falls under part of GLWA's efforts to right-size the transmission system. So the existing reservoirs, based on our analysis, are currently oversized. And then we also have pump hydraulic issues in the existing reservoir pump house. So replacing that will alleviate those issues and provide us more operational flexibility. So those are some of the main drivers behind this project and why it's important to us in maintaining a reliable drinking water system. Jim, if you have anything on the site plan. Jeff did a pretty good job introducing it.
Yeah, thank you for that, Jeff. I was having trouble following. The slides were sort of lagging for me, but I have this ingrained in my memory, so I knew what you were talking about. We've basically taken the original request for proposal from Great Lakes Water Authority. I'm sorry, I'm with Tecosing Industrial. We have a contract with Great Lakes Water Authority to design and build this facility for them. We took their original request for proposal and sort of reconfigured it and redesigned it so that we could build the entire new facility and bring it up online, which is about a two-and-a-half-year process, without interrupting their existing operations. The original plan is called for phased construction and multiple interruptions of the operation. So this, the plan you see before you, we've actually cut a year off of the original schedule by doing it this way. And we've eliminated 90% of the service interruptions that would be required to build a facility like this. We'd be happy to take any questions.
All right, sounds good. We'll go and we'll start rough with Ms. Banks.
Yes, I'm sorry. I don't think I have any questions at this time. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Brightwell?
Yes, how long would it take to build these facilities? Once you get started?
Actual, we are at the 60% age right now and we will not actually start constructing until early next year. We anticipate the pumping station between the two tanks to be built in '21. And the two tanks will be built in '22. It's going to be about a two-and-a-half-year Uh, it's gonna be about a two-and-a-half-year uh, project by the time it's, it's commissioned and, and put online.
Okay. And what is the expected life of the facility?
This, they ought to get another sixty or eighty years out of this facility.
Okay. Um, and I just happen to key in on some, I've, uh, I finished the mission political leadership program a couple of years ago and I dealt with some farmers from up in the farm. We always, we always talk about security. And uh, and you know, he's a farmer, so he's deep into uh, uh, security for his farm and he could, if something was grown, he could take it right back down to the, to the square foot where that potato came from or something. When you say there's a no-climb fence, um, is that, is that the modern security for this type of facility? Because I know that the country, we are, we are really, I hate, I hate to get up to the security, but that's one of the things that interests me. We are, we are concerned about electric grid, we're concerned about food supply and, you know, being attacked. So this, this is the, the state of the art from a security standpoint for this type of facility?
Yeah, so this is uh, Andrew. Yeah, our um, our security group at GLWA has internal uh, contacts with the uh, Department of Homeland Security. So this, the, the fencing options and uh, that, that our security's identified, you know, our standard being the barbed wire with the alternate being that no-climb fence that was shown. This is, this was something that was a cooperative effort between, you know, our organization and contacts with um, Homeland Security as well as uh, past experience that we have protecting our sites.
Okay, well, I only have a problem with, I'm just, I don't want skeptics to, to lower the uh, uh, security uh, uh, of, of this facility because I know that, you know, obviously the water supply is a, is, if you get something into the water supply, they can, they can be very disruptive, obviously, from a security standpoint. Well, I, I don't have a, go ahead, go ahead.
No, yep, that's exactly, that's uh, one of our main uh, main uh, aspects of this project, making sure the site's secure, so.
Okay. Alright, I'm done. Thank you, sir.
Alright, thank you. Uh, Mr. Hoskins?
Uh, no questions for me. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Mandelbaum?
Uh, no questions. I think this is a, a, a great idea and a great plan. Thank you.
Yep, Ms. Morris?
No questions at this time for me. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Ms. Taylor?
No questions. Thank you.
Okay, guys. You all got a pass tonight?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation.
Council President?
Yes.
I would just like to point out that this is a significant investment in infrastructure that will aid Southfield residents. And um, the gentleman on the line can correct me if I'm wrong, but this is forty, forty-five million dollar project to uh, in, improve our water delivery.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anyone else on the call which is uh, adding anything to this matter? Otherwise, we'll move it forward to our regular meeting.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, this would come back to you on uh, September twenty-ninth.
Okay, very good. Alright, thank you, Jeff.
You're welcome, sir.
Alright.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Yep, thank you.
Alright, we'll move to our next item, which is the authorization for payment to Wade Trim.
Good evening, Council. This is Larry Searls with Public Works. Um, this item, I'm asking for authorization to pay Wade Trim for engineering services that we had to call out on an emergency basis for our Harvard Row lift station. Um, once we uh, COVID hit and everyone started staying home, the end thing was to um, buy disposable wipes, flushable wipes, um, and they really wreaked havoc at the station. Also, during that time, we had to upgrade the pumps and upgrade the SCADA system itself there so that we could get a call-out. Um, failure to act on this would have resulted in a lot of uh, basement backups, sewer backups in Section fifteen. Um, the total um, emergency expenses on this project's eighty-two thousand, twenty-one dollars and seven cents. Uh, we used Wade Trim because that was the company that we formerly had under contract and had intimate knowledge with the station. Um, so we're asking for authorization to pay them uh, for the emergency repairs.
Okay. Alright, thank you, Larry. Um, doesn't sound like we got much, uh, do we, do you need a Rule ten on this tonight, or is this something that can go to?
No, sir.
No? Okay. Alright, very good. Uh, Mr. Brightwell?
Um, no questions.
Okay, Mr. Hoskins?
No, no questions for me.
Alright, Mr. Mandelbaum?
Um, Larry, and, and maybe this is really for uh, Mr. Zorn, but is this something because it happened with everyone staying home for, you know, for COVID, is this something that we can ask for reimbursement because of COVID-related issues or payments that we've had to make?
Councilman Mandelbaum, I'm not sure that we can. Um, I know we have a lot of pictures that show exactly what the issues were. We took a lot of pictures and video that this was flushable wipes. Um, I believe there's a, a, a lawsuit against the manufacturers of these products. That's something maybe we could look into jumping on.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, uh, Ms., uh, Ms. Morris?
Uh, yes, um, again, I just want to uh, encourage um, the water uh, department to put a notice in a uh, resident billing regarding this issue. So I just wanted to um, restate that, just to make the residents aware of this issue and that we do need to kind of refrain from using those types of wipes so they don't, you know, damage our manufacturing in the future. Other than that, no further comments from me.
Alright, thank you. Uh, Ms. Taylor?
Uh, no further questions or comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Banks?
Um, thank you. I agree with the um, two previous comments from my colleagues. Um, and Larry, I don't know if we, um, I, I don't understand why this can't be part of the COVID reimbursement and I'd like to see if we could at least try to see if this would fall underneath it since these were emergency per, emergency um, situations that, I don't know, I guess I look at as a, as a result of COVID. But then I guess the second question is why, you know, some of these invoices date back to March? Why are they just coming forward now?
We, we never had the station under control and I didn't want to bring them one, one at a time. Um, we had to upgrade, upgrade each pump and upgrade the reporting system because if left alone, this station wouldn't have had these issues. It is, it is flushable wipes and I think it is, I'll follow your, your guidance and, and we'll try and submit it for COVID reimbursement.
Okay, and um, as um, Councilwoman Taylor, not Taylor, Councilwoman Morris said, I think it's something we also should put either on the water bill or I don't know why we can't add like a neon colored insert to please not flush these, you know, down the toilet, just, you know, throw them away in your garbage. Um, you know, it can't hurt to remind the people um, of this.
Absolutely. Absolutely. We'll get them, we'll get them out as a insert for every customer.
Mm-hmm. Okay, I have no further questions. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. And uh, Larry, I'm, I'm assuming you'll probably work with uh, Mr. Zorn to try to see about those funds, uh, if that's a possibility. So, but thank you for the presentation. Anyone else on the line ever, any comments or questions?
Uh, Mr. Chair, this is Councilman Brightwell. Uh, Larry, you mentioned the lawsuit. This is obviously a PRAM. Uh, if that, it's a manufacturer, uh, is misleading citizens, causing the citizens to uh, damage, you know, their, their, uh, their local facility. That's, uh, I'm, well, we can, I would have the legal department and, and the other people here to track on that. Are you tracking that, Larry, just from a thirty thousand feet standpoint? Or is anyone uh, seriously tracking on the fact that, um, who, who, who manufactures this stuff? PNG, Prosket Gammel, and I don't?
Yeah, there's several, there's several manufacturers and we have absolutely tracked all of our damages that are related, um, with video and um, uh, pictures. So we, we've kept track of that and, you know, we can definitely keep track of what's going on with the uh, lawsuit.
Well, and I think it, it might be something worthwhile for the legal department or our outside consultant because they, you know, the legal department, they have a lot to do, but uh, maybe our outside uh, attorneys can bird-dog the status of that lawsuit a, as it's going through the court system. Who knows, it'd probably take a, a lifetime to get through the court system, but we should be aware of uh, you know, what's going on with this um, um, item. It, it, it has, it has to be a nationwide problem in other municipalities also perhaps watching it. But I would like for some kind of way for, for us to um, also be aware and not necessarily just casually aware because this is a substantial amount of money and, you know, substantial damage. So, uh, Mr. Zorn, is there any way we can um, engage out outside people, uh, someone who who deals with this kind of stuff to make municipalities aware when they have a potential um, um, reimbursement for damages?
He, he, the answer is yes, and I can tell you, uh, uh, oh, or Macomb County Water Resource Commissioner Candace Miller is really taking a very aggressive lead. And I, I, I will follow through, but I believe we have signed on on that uh, litigation and uh, I'm also about to forward a number of photos of this as well as a uh, newsletter piece. I think uh, I'm going through them right now. I think it was April twenty-sixth that we did a whole piece on lifts and we'll get a version of that out within the water bills. And I think the COVID funding is a very unique idea and we're certainly not opposed to being told no. Um, and also standing our position. Um, and uh, we will work on uh, those three fronts regarding this topic.
And thank you, sir. Thank you. I'm done.
The uh, SCADA Lift Station Maintenance Services?
Yes, sir. This is Larry Searls from Public Works again. Um, we're asking to um, enter into a, well, piggyback the contract that um, ICS Integration Services has with um, Water Resources Commission of Oakland County. Um, they provide um, SCADA maintenance and monitoring for our lift stations. We have sixteen of them. Um, they'll, they do the electronics and reporting. We um, that's a little bit above what we can do as far as uh, repairing these stations, so we're asking to piggyback off the um, county collective we bid um, contract with ICS. Um, the total um, is ninety thousand annually for the next three years for a total of two hundred and seventy thousand. And it'll be paid out of our um, sewer accounts, sewer funds.
Okay, thank you. Um, Council, any questions on that one? Sounds like uh, something that we just, that we have to do nonetheless, so. Uh, not, unless anybody has anything on the line that wants to jump in, uh, we'll move this forward as well.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I just want to comment, you know, we're not meeting i- in public, but I, I really think Council needs to take a step back and look at the investments you've been making in your sanitary sewer stations, your lift stations, the SCADA system. When I got here, we had a SCADA system that was not working. Today you have a SCADA system that is functional, that our staff can pull up reports and view and monitor from remote locations without physically having to go in to these locations. You're doing more on uh, your connections between the county than, than ever before. And it really speaks to the earlier statements, just as, as though we have Great Lakes Water Authority making investments. Uh, two or three meetings ago, we heard the Water Resource Commission looking at its Eight Mile Station and all of that, how all of these infrastructure pieces put together. The flushable wipes is, is a real good example and um, you know, I, I just want to, you know, I think Council needs to, you know, take a step back and, and realize what you've accomplished. This, this has been, you know, three, four years of consistent push. And as city administrator, I want to thank you for allow, giving us the resources and concurring with our recommendations to make that happen. And um, we will get a piece out on these lifts and uh, I, I think the questions that, you know, things that happened that, you know, the last council item, you know, they're unfortunate, but we're in the trenches and that was probably one of the lift stations that needed the most work and bringing in a consultant to help us get in there and manage it, we appreciate that. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Zorn. Anything else on this matter before we move forward? Okay. Um, item ten, lease of the Code House?
Thank you, Council President. The Code House is a three-story or three-bedroom historic home located at two-two-six-three-five Civic Center Drive. Um, perhaps just old would be a better term for its appearance. It sat empty for, I thought, fourteen, but actually I think it's sixteen years. And we are proposing to rent this home to an employee of facility maintenance, one of our clerical staff. And to determine the rent, we did work with our Section Eight, our Housing Department. They determined that eight hundred dollars a month was a fair rent for this and there are some factors to be taken into consideration. First of all, Mr. Zorn could have made a lot of money with me on this if he bet against me because I was certain that this person would not want to live in the house, but she did. It's pretty old, the stairs are very steep, it's not built, they don't build them like they used to because it's illegal. So it may not be as attractive as some homes that are available in the city of Southfield. Furthermore, there is some work that she will be performing while in the home. There's some wallpaper that needs to come off. The grass near the home needs to be cut so that Mr. Searl's staff can cut the other sections with their larger equipment more efficiently. Finally, generally when you rent an apartment or a home, there's a mutually shared assumption that if you're a good tenant, your lease will be able to be renewed after a year. In this case, that's possibly and probably not the case. We are trying to find other uses for this building and other dispositions. So to find somebody who wants to move into a house that they're probably gonna have to leave in a year, isn't that easy? But this is an employee of our facility maintenance that has a practical consideration because she is the one who contacts our contractors for any repairs. So it would be very good to have someone in there who at least knows the contractors, is comfortable with them, and knows who does what. That will be helpful. Furthermore, just getting someone in there will be good. The home has suffered as a result of sitting empty for so long. We're paying employees right now to make regular inspections of the home. This, it will be better for the property than leaving it empty. And finally, I really think that, I know the previous renter of this was the city administrator. This will be a new employee, not someone who has influence over how we do things. It's, it's, I think it's really great to help someone out just starting like this. And it helps the city out quite a bit.
Thank you. Alright, uh, Council, um, Mr. Hoskins, you have any questions for John?
Uh, no, no questions for me. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mandelbaum?
Uh, no questions. I, I spoke with uh, Fred about this earlier and um, all my questions have been answered, so thank you.
Alright, great. Uh, Ms. Morris?
No questions for me. Thank you.
Alright, Ms. Taylor?
Uh, no additional questions. I, I also spoke with Fred and uh, John about this earlier and they answered all of my questions. The only thing I'd like to add that John didn't mention is that this will be back on the tax roll, so in addition to her paying money, we'll also get a little bit of tax. I think that's great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Banks?
Thank you, I'm sorry. Um, the only question I have is if for some reason the- Um, the only question I have is if for some reason this does not work out and the city wants to terminate the lease, why are, why are the, um, why is the stipulation 90 days versus 30 days? I would like to see that shortened a little bit.
The thought was that 30 days or that 90 days would provide us with adequate time should we want to make any changes in relation to the building itself. Now, we're not talking about evicting someone for damaging the property or for not paying rent or something like that. We don't have to wait 90 days for that. This is simply if somewhere down the line Fred says, you know, we did find this great plan and what to do with the property. He brings it to you as counsel and you say, yeah, we're on board with that. We probably won't be able to start anything with less than 90 days notice anyway. So we're really not giving up anything with that. It just, the renter on notice that this is not a for sure guaranteed permanent thing.
Okay, but, um, just looking, you know, okay, what if for some reason the city feels the run term is not working out? What is the clause to terminate the lease agreement?
Well, there will be responsibilities of all parties involved in this contract spelled out in the contract. We will have the same eviction rights that any landlord would have.
Okay.
This 90 days notice is, is, this is 90 days notice if you've done nothing wrong. If we've just decided that we want to do something else with the property. Now, in leases, landlords write protections if you do this, if this happens. That's not what we're talking about with the 90 days.
Okay.
We're talking about you're a good tenant, but we've decided to go in a different direction.
Right. I guess I don't read the one paragraph that way. I don't know if we can clarify that a little bit better, but that's my only concern. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Zorn.
Yeah, this is Administrator Zorn. I think both John and I heard Ms. Banks' intent and we will have a dialogue with the city attorney to make sure that that language is very clear before it goes out.
Okay. Well, can we, will we be, will we be able to see it before it does?
Certainly. We can make that happen as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Brightwell?
Um, yeah, I like this idea. I think it's proactive and it's creative by John and Fred. And I think it gets off into the humanitarian aspect also. And I like this particular use of our facilities and it says a lot about the city of Southfield. So, um, I'm for this 100%.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else on the call before we move on? All right. Uh, thank you, Deputy Administrator. How are you doing? Second, next item as well?
I am, sir. The court kitchen is worn out. Not only is it worn out, but it just doesn't fit the needs of the number of staff that work in the court right now. We went through the bidding process. We've identified the low bidders, who fortunately are companies we have worked with before with great results. And we'd like to move forward with a pretty much a total remodel down to the floors and patching the walls and starting all over, turning the kitchen into just what the court needs. Our funding sources, we do have a trust and agency account that was donations for the court and most of the funding will come from that. But there will be a little bit extra needed. This is the perfect time to get this done. So we're hoping for a Rule 10 so we can, hopefully when all the employees come back for full operation in the court, they come back to a nice new, beautiful kitchen. And they deserve it. That kitchen is, I don't know if it's original, but it looks like it.
Okay. All right, so we've heard what is being requested and two things, uh, we need a Rule 10 if we wish to move forward with this. So first, uh, is everyone in favor of moving this forward? Uh, Ms. Banks?
Um, I, I do have a question, please. What is the trust and agency fund account that we are using?
I don't know if Mr. Zorn wants to address that, um, but I basically trust and agencies are funds that the city holds for a specific purpose and this purpose was for the court.
Was there, um, was there money like in there that specified, you know?
It was a donate, I think the bulk of the money was a donation from the community foundation. I don't think that was Southeastern Michigan. I think it was probably the Southfield when there was one, but I'm not certain on that. I do know the bulk was a donation from the community foundation earmarked for the court.
Okay, and then we're taking the other money from support services? Um, you know, earlier today, the mayor had mentioned that some of the other communities that utilize our court maybe should contribute, um, you know, to any improvements, um. I'm, I'm not sure if I'm in agreement of where this money is coming from. Guess I'll just say it that way.
And I think it would be great to have the other communities contribute to the upkeep of our court. Although I think we would have to review the legal mechanisms in place for funding the court. And I think there might be a response from the other agencies that when the court was profitable, there was not a sharing in that direction. But I agree, that certainly is worth researching.
I mean, I don't know if anyone else has, you know, concerns on where the money is coming from. It's, and the court has no money available to donate to this project versus it coming out of our support services account?
The court, what the court has available is in the trust and agency and that is going to be used. That is the bulk of the money. And...
All right, I guess I'm, I'm not real familiar with the trust and agency fund account, so.
Mr. President, this is Administrator Zorn. The trust and agency accounts are primarily donations. The city has, uh, I'm going to quick pull up page 136 from the audit. Uh, we have multiple accounts in there and Finance Committee Chairman Brightwell can attest that, um, spending down that, the trust and agency money has been a goal. It's my understanding that the community foundation, as Deputy Administrator McCrina indicated, this was the old, the former Southfield Community Foundation. There was 900, $9,666 that applied to the account. We've been trying to zero out some of these accounts. Uh, often the money has restrictions as to what it can be used. I agree wholeheartedly with what the mayor and what you have said, Ms. Banks, regarding, uh, more equitable arrangements, uh, with our, uh, other partners in the 46th District Court. I think as Deputy Administrator McCrina has pointed out, that is a major legal uh, concern and the documents, how our court works. I'll also point out that, and I've mentioned before to counsel, Citizens Research Council last fall produced a prob, a report regarding the shortfall of courts. And I believe last year, the last year's audit, our, uh, you know, the city is subsidizing, uh, our, our court system. And this is a very detailed re, uh, item. It's a $200 million problem in the state of Michigan, according to the Citizens Research Council. And we also have to recognize there are a lot of different thoughts giving to how we administer and run our courts, especially as, uh, demands and pressure for greater social equality, uh, is put on us. Uh, in other words, the days of policing to manage and offset the cost of your courts may very much be a thing of the past. And that too should drive Southfield to seek a more equitable arrangement with our partners.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, anyone else? I hope I didn't miss anyone.
Yeah, this is, this is Councilman Brightwell.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Brightwell, sorry.
Yeah, it's okay. I hitchhiked on what Mrs. Zorn indicated. Uh, the Finance Committee, a couple of years ago, we went, we tried, there's about 130. It was, it was a large list of, uh, trust and agency accounts. We went through with the Fiscal Services Department, tearing those down. And the, the money is, that comes in, just like the mayor Thompson farm, she left so much farm, she left so much money. Uh, to the extent someone retired or died, they left $600 to the Police Department. Uh, you know, just a lot of little things that pop up. And I did look into this briefly today. This money will clear out this account. So someone left a donation to the, uh, to the courthouse. So this will clear that account out. But it, 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 it is something that, uh, even our Veterans Commission has someone donate X money. We can only use that money for what it's designated for. So it's a good use of the funds, uh, at this particular time and whatever's left over. If there are other avenues of, um, of using that money. I mean, using the $5,714, 15 cents, getting it from somewhere else. I'm supportive of that, but if, if the facility is, 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 it's not representative of a work, of a work environment, I would, I'd be willing to utilize any account that the Fiscal Services Department deems that we can get out without harming the city. But I think, um, making that facility useful to the employees would go a long ways. But, um, it's, it, it, it is what it is. And Fred, I think if we can, I know we pared it and we went through these accounts before and I think we pared them down as much as we possibly can. This might be another time to revisit those accounts, see one that we have any more loose ends there. Uh, because there was some loose money that was kind of, um, maybe floating or flexible. And now might be another good time as a, one of our projects for the Finance Committee, just to, um, close out maybe a couple more of them. That's it for me.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brightwell. Okay, so it seems there's somewhat of consensus to move forward with this, so we'll move this to our next regular meeting as well.
I'm sorry, Council President?
Yes.
Would it be possible to request a Rule 10 on this? Um, we just want to get started as soon as we can. We've got the contractors lined up. They're ready to go. And we'd like to get it done before they're open.
My apologies. I forgot you did that. That was part two of the request. Counsel, uh, is there a type for doing a Rule 10 this evening?
Mr. Chair, this is Counsel. Mr. President, I'm sorry, before we go forward with this, I, I'm beginning to feel like, uh, our former councilman, Mr. Frazier. I, I know that Rule 10 is supposed to be designated for things that we have to do or act on immediately. I have two things. First of all, I agree with what, uh, Councilwoman Nancy Banks was saying. And I don't have a problem with the trust and agency accounts, but the support services account, I was just wondering, is there any other place that you could have looked for that $5,700? I mean, why or how did we come up with the support services account? I didn't get an opportunity to ask that question. But then the other part is why do we have to have a Rule 10 if we have another meeting in less than a week? Uh, and I know that right now with the pandemic, the employees are there sparsely, I think, but we still have it going on. Uh, it is a great time to start a project such as this. I agree with that. No objections to that. It's just that we have to get out of the habit of doing Rule 10. That's, we're, we're not utilizing them, in my opinion, for the full purposes and what they were intended. This, we only, we'll have another meeting in a week. Uh, I don't know, contract, we're already at Wednesday. I mean Tuesday, but Wednesday is tomorrow, might as well say Wednesday. So I don't know if the contractors are going to come in there, you know, over the next few days. I, you know, I don't know, but I really want us to start thinking about it. I'm not opposed to the project. I am opposed. I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying that I wish we would know how we came up with the account, support services account to utilize instead of something else. Or if we're still looking at trust agency accounts, is there another one that we can probably get the remaining down? Since we're trying to work towards utilizing those dollars. So those are the questions and comments that I have right now.
Uh, John, can you speak to, to, uh, those questions?
We can certainly postpone the project. The idea is, you're right. The idea is simply to get it done before employees come back in total. Will, will a few days make a difference? I'm not sure. All I know is that things tend to cost more and take longer than you anticipate. As far as the funding, we have to remember that the court, this was not budgeted for. But if there were surpluses at the end of the year, that would go to the city and that's my understanding and Mr. Searls will correct me. And if there were shortcomings, it would come the other direction. I'm not sure if there's money the court can cut in their budgeting. I, I think it's probably the opposite. There's been less revenue, but a lot of their costs have remained very similar due to employees remaining basically the same. But we can certainly wait and come up with, have, have Mr. Austin here to discuss next week if you like. I mean, it sounds like there's no problem with the actual project, but if the funding issues have to be answered, and I agree, that's an important issue. We can wait till next week and I'm sure Mr. Austin can give a presentation. Mr. Michael Austin.
That's fine with me. Uh, I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but that, that's fine with me.
Any objections, counsel, to that?
None from me.
None from me.
Do I need to make a motion?
I don't think so. I think we can just put, we can put it on the agenda tomorrow.
Okay.
At the sense meeting.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. And thank you, John, for your work. Appreciate it.
All right, sir. Thank you.
All right, that concludes all our items for this evening. We'll move now on to communications.
Mr. President, I'll open up the line for communication.
All right, thank you.
Good evening. Gerard Mullin, Post Office Box 155, Southfield, Michigan 48037. Mr. President, tonight I would like to talk about Section 11.18. 11.18 in the Southfield City Charter. Section 11.18 is entitled Amendment. 11.18 describes how to amend the Southfield City Charter in one easy step. Sad to say, 11.18's one easy step conflicts with the not-so-easy two-step state law, AKA the Michigan Home Rule Act. Thus making Section 11.18 in the Southfield City Charter null and void. 11.18 became null and void when the Southfield authors of 11.18 tried to adapt the Michigan Home Rule Act into the Southfield City Charter. That's when the second step in a two-step process got deleted. State law mandates that there be two, two required steps. And not one, but two, two steps to amend the Southfield City Charter. Step number one, the Southfield City Council must first pass a proposed charter amendment. And then step number two, the Southfield voters must pass by ballot election the aforementioned proposed charter amendment. Unfortunately, 11.18 deletes altogether step number two, the ballot election. And in doing so, 11.18 disenfranchises the Southfield voter. That's you. And in doing so, 11.18 disenfranchises the Southfield voter. That's you and I. In a word, you folks here on this city council need to fix section 11.18 along with the many other flawed sections in the Southfield City Charter by creating a charter commission. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hello?
Hello?
Hello, are you ready for your next communications?
Yes, we are. Go right ahead.
Good evening to this council. Good evening to Mayor Ken Seiver and all of the other city employees. I'd like to wish all of you a belated, uh, Labor Day and hope that you had a wonderful weekend. Well, 2015 in December, the city of Southfield decided to get into the real estate business against, uh, the wishes of several of the residents in the city of Southfield. A lot of the people that have been community activists for a very long time. And we participated in a visioning session that the city had. And I thought that was a very nice thing to do to attempt to involve the community in your future plans since you had purchased the property. So hundreds and thousands of dollars later, we have a visioning session and we have a vision plan and we have a master plan for Northland. And it seems like coming up on five years, the only thing that we've done is move dirt around and crush concrete. Years ago, I made the suggestion to the city of Southfield, since we own the property and we were in the real estate business, if we could consider having our state-of-the-art, new LEED-certified, Level 4 city hall built on that property since we owned it with the state-of-the-art police station for the downtown area, a state-of-the-art police administration office, as well as the fire department. And you guys looked at it as if it was a crazy idea because the people in the city of Southfield, and rightfully so, wanted basically to turn Northland into a miniature Coney Island. We wanted fountains and restaurants and houses and hotels and cotton candy machines and popcorn and soda. Well, it hasn't happened. Can the city please revisit and explore the option of making our new state-of-the-art LEED-certified Level 4 city hall on the grounds of Northland? It is such an embarrassment for that to be a historical place that the, that was built in 1954, the oldest regional mall, to just be sitting there looking the way it looks right now. So just think about it. You don't have to vote on it or do a rule 10 tonight, but just think about it. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. President, we'll wait a couple minutes to see if we have any more callers.
Okay, thanks.
It does not look like we have any more callers, sir.
All right, thank you so much. Um, before we go into closed session, does anyone else have anything they'd like to, uh, share for the good of the order? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we go into closed session.
Support.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Brightwell, supported by, is that Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Okay, that we go into closed session. Madam Clerk, it's called rules.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Hoskins? Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris? Taylor?
Yes.
One second, and Cruz?
Yes.
I'm gonna go back to Morris. Morris, are you there?
Yes.
And Banks?
Yes.
Okay, motion to go into closed session. We do have to, um, when we go into closed session. The next time someone makes a motion is we have to state the reason that we're going into the closed session. So for full transparency, we're going into closed session for discussion and strategic negotiation sessions connected with the negotiation of collective bargaining agreement and the discussion of materials exempt from discussion or disclosure by the state or federal statute. Thank you.
Madam Clerk? All right, that's it. Uh, we'll, we'll go to our other line for closed session. I give everybody five minutes or so, and, uh, so we can get started. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. President, I think the mayor wanted to say something. He might have hung up. Is the mayor still there?
Yeah, I'm here. I just, um, while we're, while we're still in the regular meeting, uh, or, uh, study session. Uh, I just wanted to make another reminder, you know, I, I sent you all, um, our event schedule for the 2020 census. Despite the weather today, we signed up 50 more people at, uh, Verpaar Park Place, uh, who had not registered for the census. And this Friday, we will be at Carnegie Park and, uh, Apartments on 11 Mile Road near Inkster. Um, we'll have a food truck, some beans and cornbread. And you don't have to be a resident of Carnegie Park, uh, to go there to, uh, register. We have census workers on hand with laptops. Uh, and again, very critically, we're trying to grow our response rate, which is still not where it should be. It's hovering around 70%. So, uh, this Friday, September 11th, um, 5:00 to 8:30 at Carnegie Park Apartments, um, 11 Mile Road, uh, just east of, uh, Inkster. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. Uh, anyone else again before, before we, uh, wrap this portion of the meeting up? Otherwise, we'll, uh, we'll go into our other line and, uh, carry out our closed session as stated.